Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month in the council chambers at City Hall. City Clerk Gomez, can you please call roll?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Lindholm.
Here.
Councilmember Davies.
Here.
Councilmember Minigar.
Present.
Mayor Protem Jennings.
Here.
And Mayor Janaway.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to ask Monsignor John Urel from St. Timothy Catholic Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Girl Scout Brownie Troop 4497 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I stand on this little bench. Good evening, everyone. Wise and loving Father, first we say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for all the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even where there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Laguna Niguel. In your holy name, I pray. Amen.
Color guard, advance. Would the Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Audience please join in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience may be seated.
Girls, wait there, and we'll come right down. Didn't they do a great job? Yes! That was awesome, girls! That is a great way to start a meeting. Thank you so much for being here tonight. That's a very important way to start our meetings of our city council, recognizing the flag of our country. So we appreciate your being here, and we appreciate the leaders for what they do for the Girl Scouts and the Brownies. And what we're going to do is to introduce who's here tonight. So I'll give you the microphone. If you can tell us your first name, what grade you're in, and what school you go to. But leaders, you don't have to tell us the grade.
I'm Michelle Chrisnowski. I am a troop leader for Troop 4497, and also one of the leaders for 2544, and we had two girl helpers from there. And I'll pass it off to Grace.
Hi, my name is Grace. I go to George White, and I'm in 3rd grade.
Hello, my name is Avery. I go to George White. I'm in 2nd grade.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I go to, I'm in 3rd grade, and I go to George White Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Addison. I, I'm in 3rd grade, and I go to George White Elementary School.
Hi, my name is Ayanna, and I go to George White Elementary School, and I'm in 3rd grade.
Hi, my name is Haley, and I go to George White Elementary School, and I'm in 3rd grade.
I'm Ilanka Killingsworth. I'm co-leader of Troop 4497. Thank you for having us.
I'd like to give the leaders a Mayor's Challenge Coin for your commitment to community and excellence in service and helping to develop our future leaders. So thank you very much for the time that you commit to these girls. So I know we have some more parents down here who want to take pictures, so we will pause for a moment and allow the paparazzi to come down. Thank you. So who's going to dismiss? Okay, our first presentation this evening is a resolution commending Commander John Haltoonan of the USS Stockdale. At this time, could I please ask Commander Haltoonan and his lovely wife Hillary to Actually, I'm going to read, but I have a larger font version. This is from the City of Laguna Niguel, a proclamation, and that is the wrong one.[872.32][872.32](laughter) That, that part was in large font and in red.[878.43][878.43](laughter) Okay, now, this is from the City of Laguna Niguel, Commanding Commander John Haltoonan from the United States Navy. Whereas in July 2017, Commander John Haltoonan assumed command of the USS Stockdale, Commander Haltoonan also served as the Executive Officer of the USS Stockdale from October 2014 through July 2016. And whereas, in 2016, the guided missile destroyer was assigned to the John C. Stennis Strike Group and deployed to the Western Pacific, where they made patrols in the South China Sea, participated in multinational operations, including vessels from 35 nations, as part of the Great Green Fleet. And whereas, after assuming command in 2017 and under Commander Haltoonan's leadership, the USS Stockdale successfully completed an extensive overhaul and numerous ship certifications and fleet exercises to prepare for an upcoming deployment. And whereas, Commander Haltoonan has been a strong supporter of the Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee, participating in our holiday parade, car washes, and numerous other activities, and has demonstrated strong leadership, technical expertise, and love of country. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Laguna Niguel City Council does hereby commend Commander John Haltoonan, Commanding Officer USS Stockdale, for his outstanding leadership, commitment, and dedicated service to the United States Navy and country, and extends to him best wishes in his future endeavors. Congratulations, and thank you so much for serving your country, our country, and our community. Thank you.[997.56][997.56](applause) Okay, and I think Councilmember Davies, who's also co-chair of the Military Support Committee, has something for Hillary.
Hillary, obviously, we know you're really the one that steers the ship, so, so we wanted to present these to you.[1016.23][1016.23](laughter) Inside and out, I get that. So we want to thank you as much, because we know that the families, the loved ones, you dedicate so much time, and just strong, so thank you very much as well.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to present you with the Mayor's Challenge Coin for your commitment to country. Thank you. And also one to Hillary, because we know of your commitment.[1042.23][1042.23](laughter) Okay, that's all right. So would you like to say something?
First and foremost, I'm honored and humbled. Thank you very much for your support, and I feel this is actually undeserving. It's truly the generosity and the spirit of service that is exhibited by the Military Support Committee that is truly awe-inspiring. So I thank you all for your service, and very much for the city for your service and support of our ship. It's been an honor to work with you, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
It's an honor and privilege to work with you and with your sailors, because they really support the activities that we do. I see members of the Military Support Committee down there shaking their heads in agreement that we are honored to support you and the families of the ship. Thank you. So Eileen's going to take a picture, and we'll, let's do first council, we'll do two, and then we'll do Military Support Committee. Now if the members of our Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee could please come This committee is a working committee. These are the ones that do the work for all of the activities and events of the committee. Okay, our next presentation is a proclamation declaring October 7th through the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week, or as one of our members of the Military Support Committee told me, every week should be Fire Prevention Week. But at this time, I would like to have Division 5 Administrative Fire Captain Justin Neville come forward for the presentation. Okay, so this is something that we take very seriously. This is an issue of public safety, and even though this week we're raising awareness about it, it's, these are practices that should be put into place every week. So whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas US Fire Departments respond to an estimated average of 358,500 home fires per year, resulting in an average of 2,510 civilian fire deaths, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, with many of today's products and furnishings producing toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas Orange County residents are responsive to public education and outreach measures, and can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware," fire can happen anywhere, effectively serves to educate the public about three basic steps to reduce the likelihood of fire and how to safely escape in the event of one. And whereas, look for places a fire can start, identify and address any potential fire hazards in the home, listen for the sound of the smoke alarm to go to your outside meeting place a safe distance away from the home, learn two ways out of every room and make sure all doors and windows leading outside open easily and are free of clutter, and whereas, taking steps to reduce the likelihood of fire and creating a home fire escape plan provide the skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. Now therefore I, Mayor Elaine Janaway, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, do hereby, hereby declare October 7th to the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge Orange County residents to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household, practice it twice a year, and participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the Orange County Fire Authority's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2018. So we've declared next week is Fire Prevention Week. We hope that all of our residents take this into consideration and really pay attention to the things that have been recommended by our fire department. It's for your protection and save the lives of those in your family.
Thank you very much.[1389.91][1389.91](applause)
Okay, and Councilmember Davies is our representative to the Orange County Fire Authority. Councilmember Davies, would you like to add anything to that?
I can tell you it's been an honor being a director on the OCFA, and I was going to have you let the audience know some of the other things, especially down in South Carolina, that the good men and women are doing.
Thank you very much. I'm going to set this down real quick, if I may. I just wanted to touch on one thing the mayor said, and with Fire Prevention Week, having a working smoke detector within your home, multiple, is probably one of the most effective ways to prevent a fire, not prevent it, but get out of your home. One thing I want to reinforce is checking your smoke detectors' batteries, and we do that twice a year. And a good way to remember that is with the changing of the seasons, the clocks, clocks go back, check your batteries. When we spring forward, check your batteries. So having a works, working smoke detector is the most effective way to be alerted of a fire in your home. You were saying about the, South Carolina, North Carolina, you all heard about the massive floods that went on back there on the East Coast. I just got back from there last week. We were deployed for two weeks out to the area, and it was a, it was a humbling experience. I've never seen floods like that in my life. A lot of good work was done. You had a 16-member task force from Orange County Fire deploy to the East Coast. We drove 61 hours across the US and performed multiple rescues, and it's just great to see everybody come together and work as a team to help effect that, and a lot of good work was done back there. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.[1497.32][1497.32](applause)
I will praise you, and I'd like to give you this for your commitment to our community in keeping our residents safe. Thank you very much. Thank you, Fire Captain.
Fair enough.
Okay, and we have, our next presentation is recognition of the Word of the Month Art Contest winners for August and September 2018. The word for August was liberty, and the word for September was education. The participants were in the primary category for August, and the winner is Eve Manessa for celebrating liberty. At this time, could Eve please come forward? Congratulations! Very good. This is for you. We'd like to congratulate you for winning the art contest, and thank you for participating in it. Okay, we hope you had fun creating your masterpiece. Good. Yes. Well, congratulations![1592.12][1592.12](applause) Yes! And we look forward to seeing more of your artwork in our future Word of the Month Art Contest. Okay, thank you. You may go back.[1601.04][1601.04](applause) Okay, and our last presentation this evening is from the Multon Niguel Water District. So first, I would like to ask the following individuals to come down for a photo op, and then they will make their presentation. So can we have Brian Probalski, the Board Vice President? Dwayne Cave, Board Member? Dick Fiori, Board Member? Larry Lazard, Board Member? Drew Attwater, Director of Finance and Water Resources? And Mehta Patel, Communications Coordinator? Now we know your trick. Okay. All right, so you're going to tell us in your presentation why we're holding a purple pipe, huh?[1707.16][1707.16](laughter) Okay, okay. That's your version of the, this you can't fit in the pocket.[1716.04][1716.04](laughter) Okay, so council, we can go back to the dais, and Multon Niguel Water District will make its presentation.
We're very proud to be here today with Multon Niguel Water District to, to talk to you about 50 years of recycling in Laguna Niguel. A little bit about Multon Niguel Water District. Multon Niguel Water District was formed November 16th, 1960, by local ranchers. At the time, we served only eight customers in an area formed from two expansive Spanish land grants, Rancho Niguel and Rancho Mission Viejo. Eight years later, in 1968, Multon Niguel began its recycling water program, one of the first in Southern California. Successful from the very beginning, the district's water recycling program has continued Successful from the very beginning, the district's water recycling program has continued to grow and now includes 1,367 customers, 150 miles of purple pipe, 19 pressure-reducing stations, 13 recycled water pump stations, 11 reservoirs, and storage tanks, and two advanced wastewater treatment facilities. With these facilities, we're able to produce and move 7 million gallons of recycled water every day to irrigate landscapes at parks, recreation facilities, golf courses, and street mediums. Overall, the district meets 25% of its demand through recycled water. We are simply here to say thank you to the city of Laguna Niguel for our partnership for these past 50 years. Here are a few key water recycling facts related to Laguna Niguel. The El Niguel Country Club was our very first recycling customer. In Laguna Niguel, we have 65 miles of purple pipe, 593 recycled water connections, 2,250 acre-feet of recycled water were used in Laguna Niguel in 2017, which to put it in a more understandable measurement, that's a big number, 733,164,750 gallons. That's quite a bit. So at your dais tonight, we have a couple tokens of appreciation for us, and again, at Molten Niguel, we're very happy to be part of Laguna Niguel, and we love serving our customers here. Thank you very much for allowing us to help celebrate 50 years of recycled water here for Molten Niguel Water District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. 50 years of water recycling, that's a very significant anniversary, and we're glad you brought the celebration to City Hall, and we're glad to be community partners with you, so thank you very much. So that concludes our presentations and brings us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council will need to complete a gold-colored request-to-speak form and present that to the city clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door to the council chambers. Please be aware that is a time limit of three minutes for each person to speak. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Gomez, I have one form up here. Are there any additional forms?
No, Mayor, that's the only one.
Okay, thank you. So the first person to speak is Bill Moorhead. If you could please come to the microphone, speak directly into it, and state your name and address.
Are these guys still here? My name is Bill Moorhead. I live at 27022 Presci Autos Drive in Mission Viejo. I used to live right across here in Crown Valley condominiums, and maybe one of my campaign promises should be, I understand you still have odors over here once in a while. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but it's something that, when I lived here, that doesn't sound good, when I lived here, there was odors. Anyway, I'm a candidate for Molten Niguel Water District Board of Directors. I've been 42 years in the business, principal water engineer for the city of Anaheim. I'm a registered engineer in the state of California, and I'm also certified at the highest level in wastewater treatment, water treatment, and in wastewater collection. Although, let my wastewater collection lapse, because it's been a while since I've been unplugging manholes. One of the main reasons I'm here, I was here last time, and I want to make sure that you, if you want to know more about me in detail, I've got a very good website that has a lot of information where I stand on things, what I feel is important, and I also send out regular emails that some of you may have received, and in these emails, I do solicit input from customers, not ratepayers, but customers of Molten Niguel Water District. And when I get these requests, my job really isn't to answer them, that's not my job, and I wouldn't be so presumptuous to, I do the district's job for them, but I want to know, going into office, what the key issues are with the customers of Molten Niguel Water Some people have said, well, I also want to say in that email and website, I have a transcript of my last presentation, so if you want to see or hear or read what I said this last time, it'd be more than welcome to. Also should shed some more light on where I stand on things. Some people ask me, why are you running for board? What do you have against them? I don't have anything against the board. I've been going to meetings for a long time of the board. I'm in the Citizen Advisory Committee. I think the board and the staff at Molten Niguel does a very good job. My job is to ensure that the service stays good, that there's continued progress, and I'm not out to displace anybody on the board, I'm there to join the board. Three of the things that I'm very adamant about or passionate about is rate stabilization. I'm not saying that we are going to lower rates, I'm not saying the rates are too high. In fact, I find it, with their new system of rate structure, I was actually able to lower my monthly bill. It is a complicated system, but it's a system that allows the customer to control really what they're spending on their water. Emergency preparedness, some of the input I've got is, what happens if we have a major earthquake? Now, I know they have a good system for backup and how to respond to those types of emergencies. I want to make sure that it continues to be robust and that we have that kind of reliability and protection.
You have 20 seconds.
Okay. My last thing, infrastructure. That's gotta be the big issue. The system is 50 years old, and that's gonna be the primary thing we have to look at. My motto is, water is life, and my life is water. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moorhead. Okay, public communications is now closed. We will now move on to our consent calendar, items one through six. I'd like to note that we will be voting on the current version of item three, minutes of the regular city council meeting on September 18, 2018, as provided in the red folder. Are there any items that need to be polled for comments or discussion?
Yes, please, item number five.
I'll move the remaining, unless you have a poll. Mayor Protem, are you gonna poll any?
No, just gonna second.
Okay, so Councilmember Davies has pulled, I mean, has moved to approve the balance of the consent calendar. That's items one through four and item six. Been seconded by Mayor Protem Jennings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. Okay, item number five, Councilmember Lindholm.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number five, I just want to share with the public, this is that a skate park and soccer field, synthetic field replacement is going out to bid, and I just want to share with members of the public how their tax dollars is being spent. It's going out to bid, I'm sure we'll do a great job with the specifications, but just so you know, a soccer field costs around $500,000, $500,000 to $550,000. So please take care of the sports fields that you're on. We're hoping they last between eight and 10 years, 10 years would be great, but if you're looking at how the council is allocating and spending your tax dollars, this is one thing we very much believe in besides our roads and our public safety, and that is our sports fields. So just so you know, this is a big dollar amount, and it's going out to bid, so I'm very happy about that, and I'm very happy to support it, but I just want to share with the members of the public. So I will move the item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lindholm.
Seconded.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Lindholm, seconded by Councilmember Davies. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, we are now on to city manager, item number one, and that is the initiation of a zoning code amendment, Laguna Niguel Zoning Code Cleanup. City Manager Ridge, can you please provide us with an update?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, this item before you tonight is seeking your authorization for staff to begin the necessary steps to amend various sections of the city's zoning code. Staff is seeking this authorization, as we have identified several existing provisions that would benefit from streamlining, greater clarity, and updating. Several of the areas identified are a result of the work of the Economic Development Ad-hoc Committee, and part of our efforts to reduce requirements for businesses to open in our city. Our Acting Community Development Director, John Morgan, has a brief presentation of the areas we are seeking authority to modify, and he will also detail what the next steps will be. Director Morgan?
Thank you for the intro. Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. I'm gonna jump right into it. So this is essentially from your staff reports, these bullet points here. So first up, we've got the removal of the minor use permit requirement for qualifying retail food restaurants. This would include, for example, a yogurt or donut shop, and other small restaurants with minimal onsite seating and parking needs. This would be modeled after what a lot of our other surrounding cities have done. Next up, we have modifying our existing non-residential parking requirements applicable to major shopping centers. Based on feedback received from our property managers and commercial brokers, which staff can generally affirm, current parking standards for our large multi-tenant shopping centers in Laguna Niguel appear to be excessive. It's probably worth highlighting, these both fall under the economic development umbrella. So this is our efforts to kind of foster those changes. Let's see, next up, we have allowing pitched solid roof patio covers. These are oftentimes called outdoor rooms or California rooms within residential districts within main building setbacks as a ministerial action. Currently, because these structures typically exceed our maximum accessory structure, height limit of 12 feet, they require a minor adjustment. A minor adjustment is similar to like an administrative variance. Next up, we have updates where applicable to be consistent with a state law change. The state legislature has passed a number of laws over the past several years which supersede local codes. These revisions would bring the city's code into conformance with these laws. Continuing on, we also have an update to the community design guidelines, which were originally drafted and adopted in 1992. Our building, site planning, landscaping, design guidelines could use some refining to be consistent with concurrent design trends and principles. Next up, we have just a general catch-all. Over the years, sections of the code have been identified that would benefit from clarification, additional graphics, and corrections to typos, redundancies, and errors, which staff would like to address. And then lastly, we have to aid in preserving community aesthetics and standards, especially as the community ages, evaluating and possibly expanding property maintenance requirements, nuisance provisions, and the tools available for code enforcement would be beneficial. Should the council decide to move forward with a zoning code amendment, the next steps would be for city staff to draft the applicable ordinances. The draft ordinances then would be presented and considered at a planning commission hearing. Recommendation and draft ordinances would then be forwarded to city council for consideration and formal action. Given the considerable scope of these potential changes, this is envisioned as a multi-phase effort with a series of ordinances drafted over time. And with that, staff is recommending that the council initiate the zoning code amendment to update and clarify various requirements of the Laguna Niguel zoning code, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Director Morgan. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Davies?
Thank you. Just a comment. First of all, Mr. Morgan, I want to thank you and your staff and our city manager for putting this forth. You know, we consider ourselves to be business-friendly, and I've been part of this for the last few years, where, you know, we said, what can we do to make a difference, especially when it comes to bringing restaurants in and retail? And the number one was the parking zoning, as well as the fact that we could have outdoor patio. I mean, we all know what people want, and so I'm really grateful that we're moving this forward. I think it's gonna open the doors to more retailers wanting to come in, so thank you for the great job.
Any other comments? Okay, can I have a motion to initiate a zoning code amendment to update and clarify various requirements of the Laguna Niguel zoning code?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our discussion items, so now we'll move on to other business and council reports. First, we have the Economic Development Ad-hoc Committee, and I'd like to say some of what Acting Director Morgan referred to as a result of the Economic Development Committee, and also the outreach that we have done to our property owners and property managers and the stakeholders. And we recently had a meeting, we called it a brokers' meeting, but a meeting with them to get more input from them, because we find input from them is very valuable, which has led us up to this, and continuing work that we're doing in streamlining the processes, and also to introduce them to the Retail Coach, which several meetings ago, the city council allocated the assets to provide that service to the city, so we can get more information, more in-depth information about our demographics and our residents' shopping patterns and behaviors, so that we can attract to the city the businesses that our residents need and want. And I know we had also an Economic Development Ad-hoc Committee meeting. Mayor Protem, would you like to discuss?
Sure, only for a moment, and thank you, and you covered most of it. I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the residents who contact the mayor and I about economic development issues, and for the rest of the council when they pass those on. We are definitely thinking about you. The number one thing that anyone asks us for is, what can we do to enhance our restaurants and our activities around town? And parking has really been one of the big impediments to people who are trying to apply for those. This is just a giant step forward, and it's really something we want to get out of the way of that process. We're trying to provide concierge-level service here at the city and do something that other cities just simply can't or won't, but Laguna Niguel gets it right, and we want to make sure that that trickles down through the rest of our code as well. We do have another meeting coming up. These are public meetings, and they occur every month, and we invite the public to come in if they want to hear and participate. The next one is on October 22nd, so we'd love to see you there. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, next, we had the Grant Ad-hoc Committee. That was myself and Councilmember Davies, and this is where we reviewed the grants for many of our community service organizations, and also some of our school groups, the cultural arts grants, and the special events grants. And I'll tell you, there's a lot of activity going on out there in Laguna Niguel. We have incredible volunteers who make sure these wonderful things happen, but you always need a little bit of financial support. We did have more requests than we did have dollars, but we felt that we had a very fair allocation of the dollars and meeting the needs of our community, and that had been forwarded to the council. And then that committee won't meet again until next year. Okay. Okay, council reports. Councilmember Lindholm.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to thank, I do believe this is time to go forward with the ordinances. We are overparked with a lot of our businesses, and this would be quite appropriate. I know they're planned for like Christmas, the day before Christmas, which is a maximum parking issue, and we could certainly do more. And I agree with the outdoor eating, which is in Alisa Viejo and Dana Point and all the other places, so I'd love to see a step up in that area. And I talked briefly to our city manager about signage. I think our signage is outdated in the city, our code is probably too small, and it could use some expansion. And then on a different issue, our church this weekend did a wonderful mission outreach that had to do with the homeless and many other things that they were doing. One of the things they brought forward was homemade, and I've shared that with our city manager, so she can give us more information for the homeless committee, so I'm looking forward to that. Just to, an update for you, I understand that the fam, which is at the church, they said they gave away 7,500 pounds of food last week, which I thought was quite significant. I wanted to share that with the council and let you know that we have people here within the city who are, a lot of our faith leaders and a lot of the service organizations that are still, we haven't forgotten about the issues with the homeless, but we are still doing quite a bit in terms of taking care of those, and a major priority of mine is to keep residents within their homes. And there are many service organizations that the county has that tries to keep people in their homes and families together. So that's my update for you. Thank you.
Your Councilmember Lindholm. Councilmember Minigar.
As a representative for the cities of Alisa Viejo, Dana Point, San Clemente, San Clemente, San Clemente, and San Clemente, California, I would like to say that I'm
Dana Point, San Clemente, San Juan, Capistrano, Laguna Beach, and obviously, the great city of Laguna Niguel, I participated in the O-COG meeting in the city of Buena Park on September 27th. And the biggest takeaway for all of our cities happens to be what SCAG is trying to achieve for the year 2020 under the RTP update. The most devastating issue happens to be that CARP, California Air Resources Board, and also the South Coast Air Quality Management District have been imposing upon all the cities in Southern California. That would include 191 cities in six counties, that by the year 2020, we have to reach to 19% reduction in the greenhouse gases, which is almost impossible by all the industry leaders, and a lot of people have been echoing their voices. More specifically, all the businesses saying that for Southern California's businesses to be able to reduce the greenhouse gases by that much is extremely difficult. And we had during the last meeting Dwight Robinson, Councilmember Dwight Robinson from the city of Lake Forest, you know, echoing his voices as a business owner, you know, in the fleet management business. He said it's almost impossible, and they have to, you know, they have to go over a lot of reduction in their production and layoffs, because they cannot achieve that kind of reduction. So, but this is what CARP, California Air Resources Board, is imposing. And basically, this decision has been imposed by the people in Northern California, which is all the Bay cities, because they have a different system, they use more mass transit than Southern California, and our quality of life and everything else would be impacted because of that required reduction. By the way, for your information, in the year 2016, the cap for Southern California was 13% in 2016. Now with more trucks on the roads, with more cars, more businesses, economy's booming with 4% increase in the, you know, domestic national product, they're asking for 19%. So that remains to be seen. The next two years is going to be extremely pivotal, because all the district directors would be from Southern California, and myself, or all the South County's cities, we are going to be taking the same position that is almost impossible for us to achieve. You're going to ask what's the potential negative ramification of that? Well, basically, what's going to happen is the US government's going to say, hey, you guys in Southern California, specifically in Southern California Association of Governments as MPO, you are not complying, conforming with that requirement. Therefore, we are not going to give you money, because you cannot reach to that requirement. So it's not up to one specific city like Laguna Niguel. It's culmination of all the cities that, how we can achieve that within the next two years. And Mayor Don Wagner Irvine, as a former assemblyman, echoed his frustration that it's almost impossible for Southern California cities to meet that kind of harsh threshold. But first, let's wait for the election cycle. Let's see what happens, you know, next month, and who's going to be back in the office, and then this item to be discussed further. And the biggest, I think, takeaway for us as a city would be the Reno numbers. All the Reno numbers, according to the presentation that I heard, the Reno number's going to be changed, and the expectation's going to be higher for an affluent city such as Laguna Niguel. So there are a bunch of different factors that are causing that. One of them is the shortage of housing, economy's booming, on and on and on. So that remains to be seen, but according to the forecast, it is going to be inevitable. And the Reno requirement for this city's going to go up in conjunction with 13 other cities in South Orange County, and 34 cities in Orange County. Now, for Public Works Department and Community Development Department, there is a deadline for the submission of Call for Projects, which is November 1st, 2018. And by the way, the only local match requirement is 25%. So I strongly encourage our Public Works and Community Development Department, you know, if you have not done so yet, by coming up with a list of potential projects. The projects have to be within the areas of reduction in vehicle miles of travel, or they call it GAG, which is greenhouse gas production reduction. And it's based on basically traffic, you know, projects, how we can, you know, quantify the projects by that date. So the CFP closes, Call for Projects closes mid-December 2018. CFP award recommendation would be January 2019. A lot of cities, I have to mention this. We pay a lot of taxes, and I always argue with my colleagues when I'm sitting with 191 other cities representatives. We are a donor city. We pay a lot of taxes, and we get not much back from Sacramento nor from Washington DC. And quite frankly, we have to take back our fair share as much as we can. And this is one area that we can, you know, reclaim for what we've been paying into the system. City of Santa Ana in Orange County, I looked at all the stats, does receive the most amount. And I checked with my colleagues in the city of Santa Ana, we pay more. We pay more, and that's very frustrating to me for one, that we, the residents of this city pay a lot more, and the rate of return for us on the investment, on the contribution, is not even equitable, is far less. With all due respect to that city and all the residents, I think we ought to be getting our fair share of what we pay into this system. So, and then it's going to come to our board, which I'm a member of the regional council, for the final vote on February 2019. I can help as much as I can if I get a copy of the applications. I sit on different committees of SCAG. I can be a catalyst in the process, and I'd like to advocate for our causes, and for all other South Orange County cities, that I can expedite the applications, because it's the same. The same story goes with the city of Dana Point, city of Laguna Beach, Dana Point, I mean, Alisa Viejo, San Juan, Capistrano, and San Clemente. All of these cities pay a lot into the system. But unfortunately, we don't get what we pay for as a kind of either projects, or grants, or what have you. And also, there is another funding source, which is MSRP, and I believe is mobile sources, that they're going to have $2.7 million available. So if you need more information, everything's on the scag.org site. And as I said, the application submitted opens November 1st, but then it closes on this mid-December. So we got time, and I don't know about the city's system, if you're going to be using a grant writer or application helper, what have you. I think it's worth it to take advantage of the funding. So with that, that's my only report.
Thank you, Councilmember Minigar. Councilmember Davies?
Yeah, I want to thank Councilwoman Minigar. That was a great report. Just two things. I attended the IBNA meeting with Mayor Pro Tem Jennings. I was really happy to see that we were putting together procedures and the scope of work that the committee will be handling, as well as the internal audit, which I'm sure will be coming to the council down the line. So thank you, great job, especially for you, Mr. Hillson. Great job. And then also, talking about, when we had Justin up here about doing walks, Chief Cantares and myself, we're going to be bringing this to Laguna Niguel, where you do kind of a smoke alarm walk, and you go through the different neighborhoods. You check the smoke alarm, and if it needs to be replaced, they're replaced. And I think some of the cities they just recently did, they covered in one day 400. So I'll let the council know when that comes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Great, thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the council, I sit on the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. I wanted to give you a quick update on that. It's been in the news a little bit lately. There was one case of encephalitis in Los Angeles County that appears to be isolated, it's extremely rare, and that thus far has not been found in Orange County. That being said, North Orange County's been suffering greatly with West Nile virus mosquitoes and birds that the mosquitoes have bitten. They, the vector control board is acting very aggressively to try to address that, and I think they're doing a good job thus far. I understand we have only one case thus far of a human contact with West Nile virus. And while that's tragic and terribly unfortunate, it is way down from other years. The good news is for Laguna Niguel and South County, we're really not experiencing that at all. And so we've had a completely clean slate on that. So we've been very fortunate in that, and I'll definitely keep you posted if that changes. I'm absolutely certain that the mayor's about to talk about it, but before she did, I wanted to say thank you. We had just a tremendous time at the Interfaith Prayer Breakfast, the mayor's Interfaith Prayer Breakfast this last week. The Interfaith community in Laguna Niguel really came together. There must have been 150 or 200 people there or so, I guess. And it was very moving. I was very proud to see what they did, the different positions and the different thoughts that each of them shared was just very heartwarming and a great way to start the day. And it was so nice to see that depth, the perspective in our community from all walks of life. We live in a tremendous city with a lot of very diverse cultures that work well together, and I think the world could take an example by how well we do it here. And I want to say thank you to the mayor for all of her efforts in pulling that together, and for all that it was. And I hope that that happens in years to come. It ought to, because it was a great event. So thank you.
Okay, so for my report, I was invited back to the White House, and on September 20th, attended the Women Mayors of America at the White House Conference. So there were mayors from around the country, different-sized cities, different locations, different economies, and different demographics. But all of us have the same concern and the same focus, and that's providing the safety, opportunity, quality of life, and good governance to our residents. This was a nonpartisan conference, and political ideologies were not discussed. But we were all concerned about the constant attempts in each of our states to chip away at local control. I met with Vice President and Mrs. Pence, and discussed federal initiatives and partnerships that they are forming with private businesses to help military spouses. And one big issue with military spouses is the ability to maintain their careers. Because of the constant moving, of being in different locations or states for maybe two years at a time, if you're in a profession that requires local or state licensing, every time they move, they need to get relicensed, and that's very costly. So now, the government is helping assisting with that. And there's also been partnerships made with some private organizations, like LinkedIn, giving military spouses a free year of premium membership, so that when they move, they can, it kind of helps jumpstart their job search. So there, but they gave many different examples of what is taking place. And since Vice President Pence and Mrs. Pence do have a son in the military, and their son is married, so they see what a military spouse goes through. So this is really something that they are quite passionate about. Also, met with different cabinet secretaries and key administrators to discuss education and the need to grow our country's workforce by having the necessary skills and the ability to adapt to jobs of the future. Presently, there are not enough people trained for the current job openings that we have. We also spent a lot of time discussing the opioid crisis. This is the worst single-drug crisis in US history. And I know recently, we've seen that Senator Pat Bates has had some legislation passed on that. But this is something that is a scourge in our country, and we really, every single community, needs to take assertive and aggressive action on this. And what I was struck by was they were talking about the enormous success that they had on the drug take-back days, the millions of pounds of drugs that, or prescription drugs that were taken back. And I thought, wait a minute, in Laguna Niguel, you don't need to wait for a specific day. At any day, you can take unused prescriptions and drop them off at police services for proper disposal. So I hope that that's a model maybe the rest of the country will begin to follow, because we do need to get unused prescriptions out of the homes, out of the medicine cabinets, because that's where teenagers, visitors to your home, whoever goes looking, and they don't necessarily care what drugs they are, but they'll, that's a source of drugs for them. So thank you to our police services for having that drug take-back every single day in our community. On September 22nd was the Chamber of Commerce's Annual Mayor Event, which you've heard a lot of talk leading up to it. That was a lot of fun and a great success, and it's a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. Just before that, I was at the Kite Hill 40th Anniversary. Kite Hill is one of our neighborhoods here in Laguna Niguel, and homeowners have lived there now for 40 years. So they had quite a celebration with residents. They called it being 40 years on the hill. But, and I presented them with a certificate from the city recognizing their contributions to our entire community. Also, the Arts Committee had a meeting, and at the upcoming Fall Boutique, which I think maybe Director Giglio will be talking about, the Arts Committee will be having a table. So stop by and see them and talk to them, and see how you would like to participate in bringing arts, both visual and performing, to our community. Mayor Pro Tem talked about the Laguna Niguel Interfaith Council's Mayor's Breakfast of Compassion, and I give my sincere appreciation to all those who participated in it. It was, we had 172 people at that event for early morning breakfast, and it was very uplifting and inspirational. We had many different faith communities represented. And we also, though, shone the light on what we are doing as a community in the issue of homelessness. It is, as Councilmember Lindholm mentioned, it is much better to prevent homelessness in the first place. So we had speakers from South County Outreach, as well as Family Assistance Ministries, talking about what they do to prevent homelessness or assist those who have become homeless. So it is something that we hope to continue. We, this was our first annual, we hope to make it a tradition, because the support from the community was overwhelming on this. And this was an event put on by the Interfaith Council. And the Laguna Niguel Historical had a meeting, so everybody mark your calendars for December 1st. After the Christmas tree lighting, the Historical Society will be having a Laguna Niguel Birthday Party, 29 Forever. So that'll be something you'll be hearing more about. We have two very important upcoming events. One is, we'll be here in City Hall in the Community Room on October 24th. And it will be put on by Laura's House, and this is specifically for teenagers and their parents, and anyone who works with teens. And it's a topic we don't want to talk about. It's not a comfortable topic. It's what your teens don't want you to know, exploring the trends in unhealthy adolescent relationships. In the US, the statistics are that one in three teenagers experience some form of teen dating violence. And what should be concerning to us is that a recent study from Chapman University indicated that Orange County is twice the national average. So these are discussions that we need to be having with our teenagers, and we need to know how to approach it and how to start. And Laura's House will have a panel there to discuss that with us and our teens. This is an issue of public safety, keeping our kids safe. Even if they're teenagers, they're still kids, and we need to, as a community, know how to keep them safe. So you can see information on the city website about this on October 24th. And another very important event, you saw earlier in the meeting that Commander Haltonan was recognized, and we are having, our Military Support Committee is having its annual fundraiser on Saturday, October 27th, a tribute to our military. We will have inspiring testimonials from the commanding officers of our adopted units. We'll have dinner and dancing and silent auction. But all of the funds raised go to directly benefit the military members and families of our city's three adopted units. And our city's in a unique position of having three adopted units. Most cities only have one. A couple of cities might have two, but, you know, Laguna Niguel were remarkable. We have three adopted units. So there's opportunities to be an event sponsor, or just come, attend the dinner, or sponsor a military member. But you can find information on our Military Support Committee website and the city website, or ask Councilmember Davies or myself, because we are co-chairs of that committee, and that's on the 27th. And then also, just to, we've talked about the homeless and the need for food. South County Outreach, as many of you know, they had a flood which has really impacted these food that they're able to provide. We do have a collection barrel in City Hall, so please drop off non-perishable food for that, to that collection barrel, and we will be sure that it gets to South County Outreach to help those families in our community stay in their homes. And that is all that I have for. And that is all that I have for council comments. And so now, we start with city manager and department reports, and we will start with Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow morning, Laguna Niguel Emergency Management will be conducting a test of the Alert OC Emergency Notification System. This test will be part of a regional exercise involving 20 participating cities, as well as the county's unincorporated areas. For those folks who are signed up with the Alert OC, it'll be a phone call telling them it's a test, but it'll be a test of that system. Those folks who aren't signed up for Alert OC, I strongly encourage you to do that. Alertoc.com is how you sign up. It's a very easy process to do that, and it's how we get notifications out to people should there be an emergency in our local area or in the region. So I encourage people to do that. There will be a test of that tomorrow. Coincidentally, there is a federal test tomorrow, so everybody who has a cell phone. There is a wireless emergency alert system test that should take place tomorrow morning, so you will get a tone and probably that you're getting a test of some sort. That is nationwide, so you will also get that tomorrow for that. We had our paper shred event last, or Saturday, the 22nd of September. We serviced 850 cars, went through the point of distribution exercise, and we serviced 55,760 pounds of papers were collected. The average person from, once they entered the City Hall parking lot, spent 3 minutes and 22 seconds going through this process. For those of you who don't know, we do it as a point of distribution test exercise as well. Our emergency services coordinator, Phil Robinson, if we had an emergency where we had to distribute items, water, anything along those lines, we would use a similar system, and that's how we test that system doing this paper shred event. So it really kills two birds with one stone doing this. And so I would like to thank Phil Robinson for coordinating that event and getting us through that. I'd also like to thank the PAC volunteers and the explorers who spent their time helping us on that occasion. It went really, really well. I got tremendous feedback from it. And lastly, we are hosting a Coffee with a Cop next Wednesday, October 10th. It'll be at Corner Bakery on La Paz, basically La Paz and Pacific Park. It's from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. I will be there. If you want to get a picture with Jack, you'll be there. But if folks have questions or just want to meet us, our deputies will be out there to have coffee and answer any questions and just have a conversation. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Director Earlson? City Attorney Dixon? Fire Captain Neville?
Just to echo what Lieutenant McDaniel said, excuse me if I got that wrong, but if there's any questions that are generated from the National Alerting System, you can always direct them to our website at ocfa.org for disaster preparedness. And to echo what he said, OC Alert is, encourage them to sign up for that. We're due to get some precipitation this week, hopefully, but that does not take away that threat from the wildfire. We're getting into that critical time of year when it's a threat. So also encourage any people within the community to head to our website and look up our Ready, Set, Go program for wildfire preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Director Morgan?
Uh, no, excuse me. Just one item. Although they've been leasing since late summer, happy to report that Cresta Villa had their official grand opening celebration earlier this evening.
Yes, we were there.
Fantastic.
We cut a red ribbon.
Very good. That's all.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk Gomez? Director Giglio?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, the Saturday, October 6th, is the annual Fall Boutique and Crafts Fair at Sea Country Senior and Community Center. We have over 75 vendors signed up for the event, and this is a great way to support small business in the community. That's from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and admission is free. And next week, Imagination will present a fun, Imagination Nation will present a fun spooktacular adventure on Friday, October 12th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Sea Country Center. Admission for that is $5, and children are invited to wear their Halloween costumes. This is a high-energy and interactive song and dance show, and it's definitely a great alternative for the little ones who should not be attending haunted trails. So, that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager Bell?
Well, in the vein of disaster preparedness, there is an upcoming opportunity for you and the community members to help us practice yet another disaster-related exercise, which is a point of distribution, which, or point of dispensing. And it would be in the case if there were a pandemic or something like that, where we would hand out vaccines or medications on a grand scale. They're actually practicing on October 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Great Park in Irvine. And anybody who attends will get a bag full of disaster-preparedness information and while supplies last, a pumpkin. But it is a way for the community to help us see how well we've planned out a mass dispensary of medications. There will be no actual medications dispensed, other than pumpkins and smiles and bags full of emergency preparedness.
Thank you. Director Scott?
Nothing this evening.
And City Manager Ridge?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. We have received a draft technical report from HMMH on the short-term noise monitoring that was conducted in our city to measure the, measure and log aircraft noises. So I'm gonna be scheduling a public workshop in the near future to share the collected noise monitoring data and provide the opportunity to answer any questions. And in addition, once the report is finalized, we will make it publicly available on our website. And the second item is next week, Monday afternoon and all day Tuesday, I will be attending the ICSC Western Regional Conference to promote economic development in our city. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Okay, well, before we adjourn, I have something to share. After providing us with legal services for 30 years, Terry E. Dixon has decided to retire and has provided notice that he will be ending his legal services contract with the city effective December 31st, 2018. City Attorney Dixon has served Laguna Niguel for 30 years, beginning in 1988, when we were a community services district. The service he has provided our city has served us very well. He has been with our city prior to incorporation and has been a trusted advisor, helping to shape Laguna Niguel into the remarkable city that it is today. I am thankful for the years that Mr. Dixon has provided legal counsel and wish him only the very best in the future. In light of his letter that we have received, we will need to begin our process of obtaining legal services for our city. So City Manager Ridge, could you please prepare an RFP agenda item for the next meeting?
Mayor, may I briefly comment?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the words. Don't have too much I want to say tonight. It's been an honor and a pleasure to have worked for and represented the citizens of Laguna Niguel all these years. And I suspect I have a few more things to say as time passes. But again, I want to thank you for your comments.
Okay, well, and thank you for your service to the city.
Can you give him a round of applause?
Yes, we can, actually.
Meeting's adjourned.